Plenipotentiary.
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 We are certainly headed in the right direction. And as I said in my letter, I am confident that the best years as a community are ahead of us. And I have, as I said in the executive session, a passion for this community. While we may not always agree on the approach, we share in the passion of making Abington the very best community in the social region. The town was recently awarded an $800,000 grant between the towns of Abington and Whitman for housing rehabilitation, social service outreach, and the food pantry programs in both Abington and Whitman. We need to find ways to diversify our tax base to increase manufacturing, high-tech, and biotechnology in order for us to be able to afford the future costs that this town is going to incur. Over the next three or four years, we're going to contemplate the need to build a new school, whether that is a middle school or a high school. Currently, based on what I look at to be future revenue for the town, that is going to be very difficult for us to do without studying ways in which we can diversify our tax base even further. Right now, 11% of our tax base comes from commercial taxes. The majority of it is obviously residential. We all know that residential taxes are the most regressive tax base, tax form that we could have. And as we look at expanding services and programs, particularly at the high school or middle school level, as we look forward to building a new school, I think that we're going to need to also simultaneously look at ways in which we can expand our tax base. I had reached out to Professor Mullen, who is a dear, very dear friend of mine from the University of Massachusetts. I think I sent you an email while I was convalescing. I had nothing else to do, asking to develop a series of design surets for residents to come in, sit down, go through a process of planning the future of Abington, planning where we can see growth, and working with Professor Mullen to develop a master plan for the development and future growth of the town of Abington. We want to be very mindful that we don't take away the small-character feel. People moved into this community for that purpose alone, and we want to make sure that we protect that, but at the same time, we need to diversify our tax base. I would also say that the residents of this community wanted a strong town manager form of government, and I am willing to address the complex issues that confront this community. We have made progress. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and we, I think, need to protect and ensure the successful continuation of the strong manager selectment form of government in Abington. I could go on about what our future needs are, and I will do that very briefly. We need to negotiate fair and equitable contracts. I am hoping that very soon we'll have a closure on the fire contract that I believe is fair, equitable, and affordable. We, now as a result of our new integrated software program, I know what monies are available in each of the accounts at the end of the fiscal year for the first time ever. And I think that that's important. It's important for us to be able to manage that information and know where our dollars are so that we... There was some discussion of looking at giving money back to people who come up with good ideas to save money for the town. If departments can save money for the town, we should look at providing some of that money back to the departments as well because it'll encourage them to look at more progressive ways of saving money, which is going to benefit the town as a whole. So, I think that those are some of the accomplishments that I think that I have to offer. I can surely say to you that I've made some mistakes. I'm human. We all have made mistakes. I guess if I could leave you with one thought, I think this thought would probably be, hopefully, a guiding thought. Maybe not. If we are looking to move the town forward, then we can continue down the path that we have currently charted. If there is a desire on the part of the board to change that path, then I can offer you the fact that we could change in a way that's going to preserve the integrity in programs and services that we have, are designed to protect. I think opening station two for the fire department was huge. We have some shortcomings that we need to address. Police is a very important public service that we cannot let get, go by the wayside. We have to provide resources for our police department. They are down a number of men. The same thing with our highway department, but we have to do it incrementally. And at the same time, we have to be able to manage our ability to do it in a way that allows us to grow incrementally and not overspend and recreate what occurred in prior years. And so, if you want to judge me based on my performance and my accomplishments, a decision I believe should be easy. If there is, you know, individuals out there who are saying, you know, we need to get rid of them, I can't, I don't know who those people are, and I can't address those issues. I know what I've done, and what I have done for this community, I think, is something that very few people who have preceded me have been able to accomplish. And I don't think I have ever hurt this town. I have benefited, I have provided benefit to the town, I think. So, that's where I stand.
Okay, so, I guess the bottom line on item number two on the agenda, letter to town manager John, by town manager John DiAgostino to seek employment elsewhere. Are we rescinding that request?
That's what I'm asking the board to consider.
Absolutely.
All right. So, I don't think we have to take any action on that if he's asking that we rescind it. Item number three is reappointment of town manager. And we do have Attorney Hodnett here, who was advising us earlier. If anybody has any questions for the attorney, he's present.
I think if we could, Mr. Chairman, where Attorney Hodnett had had the opportunity to review everything, perhaps he could encapsulate it for the board and, you know, give his, give the situation and advice in terms of moving forward, if that would be okay.
Yes. Yeah. If you'd like to hear him just...
Paul Hodnett from the law firm of Rubin and Rudman. The town manager is in the third year of a three-year contract. The contract expires on April 26th of 2013. Under the terms of his employment agreement, the Board of Selectment must act no later than 120 days before the expiration of his contract as to whether or not he will be reappointed to the position of town manager. That is the third item on the agenda tonight as to whether or not the board should reappoint him. Legally speaking, under the terms of the contract, you don't have to take action tonight. You can wait until no later than the last week in December of this year, which would be the 120 days notice that is required under the term of his employment agreement. But it is on tonight's agenda, so I'm assuming that the board at some point will take a vote either to postpone or to actually make a decision on reappointment or non-reappointment tonight. It seems to me, without taking your position one way or the other, that the board has to make, has to examine two pieces of correspondence that you've received from the town manager. You received correspondence from him April 25th of this year in which he expressed significant differences between himself and the Board of Selectment. In his April 25th correspondence, he outlined those differences, and that is the correspondence in which he also asked for the permission pursuant to his current agreement to actually look for employment elsewhere. He indicated that he was, in addition to pointing out the significant differences between the board and himself, he indicated that, I'll terminus, he was frustrated in terms of his compensation package and whether or not he was being appropriately compensated. Those, you're going to have to assess the April 25th correspondence with, the most recent correspondence you received from him dated June 25th, in which he outlined his accomplishments. I think he just summarized that June 25th letter. So, I think from the board's perspective, you're going to have to assess those two pieces of correspondence, as well as what you believe to be his performance over the past two and a half years. Under the terms of his current agreement, if you vote not to reappoint, and he is prepared to serve beyond the date of the expiration of his contract, he would be entitled to a 90-day severance payment unless the decision to not reappoint him is for one of the identified reasons in his employment agreement. So that, I think what the board has to understand is, if you're going to, if you're going to consider non-reappointment, what is the reason for the non-reappointment to determine whether or not it would fit into one of the listed reasons that would make him ineligible for the severance payment? One issue that comes to mind is the issue that came up in April with regard to the town manager's application for employment for a town, for a job in Florida. There is, in his current agreement, a requirement that prior to actively seeking employment outside of the town, he would have to get consent from the town. I don't think there's a factual dispute that he never obtained that consent because the April 25th letter was sent to you requesting that permission, and it occurred after the application had been sent to Florida. I think there, to be quite honest, a factual dispute in terms of the town manager's interpretation of the agreement that he was not actively seeking employment, I think was his, is his explanation for what occurred in Florida, so that he's not in violation of his contract. But, in my opinion, the failure to seek your consent for him to apply for outside employment could be deemed to be non-feasance, and non-feasance is one of the reasons that you could, he would not be entitled to a severance payment if he engages in non-feasance. And non-feasance is the failure to act, and in this particular case, he failed to act by failing to request the town's consent to apply elsewhere. So, to the extent that you ought to consider non-reappointment, you should consider non-reappointment for a reason, and if, and one reason that would make him ineligible would be his violation of the contract. And again, from the town manager's perspective, I think he would disagree with that interpretation. So, to the extent that, in the severance payment we're talking about, 90 days is approximately $40,000 paid. So, I think those are factors that you have to weigh in terms of, if you're going to decide on non-reappointment, what the reason for the non-reappointment is. And to the extent that there is no reason, then I would have to advise you, you'd be responsible for the 90-day severance payment. To the extent that you act on the non-feasance, as I've identified it, because he sought, he applied for the job in Florida, I think, I should advise you that, as I said, he's got a different interpretation, and there may be litigation over the interpretation of that section of the contract. And beyond that, I'm willing to take individual questions if the board has any.
Any questions? Tom?
Yes, I just have a question. If we decided either for or against reappointment, you had mentioned a couple of documents, you mentioned, I think it's actually the June 29th letter that he just stated his accomplishments.
Yes.
And then this April 25th.
Yes.
Letter. And I guess the other one that he submitted, I think, to all board members was the town manager performance evaluation form, which I think each board member got. But outside of that, if the decision or a member fell for non-reappointment, would that be within the boundaries of fair game, let me call it?
Let me correct myself. I have not seen the town manager's non-reappointment, and the decision by the board to not reappoint could be based on any reason that each individual member sees fit. I don't, I haven't seen the town manager's performance evaluation. I don't know how the board assessed his performance evaluation. You would clearly be within your rights to vote for or against reappointment based upon his performance evaluation. The only reason I cited the two pieces of correspondence is because they appear to be diametrically opposed. In April, the town manager expressed one set of feelings, and in June, he expressed a completely other set of feelings. But clearly, if you want to make your decision based on your observations of the town manager's performance or specifically on the document, you would well be within your rights to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for these questions.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. So, yeah, I guess the question comes as to whether or not you want to vote to reappoint, vote to not reappoint, and I don't think we are required, as Attorney Hodnett said, to even make that determination tonight if we don't want to. We do have to give Mr. DiAgostino, at a minimum, 120 days' notice if we are not going to reappoint him. So, we would have until sometime in December if we wanted to wait and see if we wanted to make the reappointment or non-reappointment at that point in time. Anybody have any ideas?
I think, well, I think the initial question has to come first on the question of making a decision, whether we make the decision this evening or not. I think that, you know, in its totality, whatever that decision is, if it should be not to reappoint, I think in fairness to the town manager, if that's the way it ends up going, that it got, to be fair to him, he needs ample time to secure other employment. So, I think although the contract indicates 120-day notification period, which will bring us to the end of the calendar year, I think to be fair and equitable, if we're going to make that determination, I think some determination should be made presently so that at least he has an understanding of where his position is with the town. Now, that's my feeling. I think that's...
Yeah, and just in response to that, if we weren't in this situation where he had sent that letter previously, and we wouldn't be here tonight making that determination. We'd be making it sometime in December at that point in time.
That's correct.
So, my feeling, and I thought long and hard about this, and I have found a list of John's accomplishments versus, you know, his pluses, his minuses, since the whole occurrence in May and the comments to the press, the letter to us, and our meeting on May 21st, my feeling is he's, John's been on somewhat of a probationary period, for a two-month period, to see how things are going. I think things have been going fairly well, in my opinion. Again, I would, I would like to see maybe we wait until that December date, which would kind of be extending whatever probationary period he's been on, make our determination there. I think in fairness to Tom, Tom hasn't really had a chance to sit on the board. He's been here for two months. He probably hasn't had a chance to really review John's performance all that well because he's only been here for two months. And so, I would like to see us wait until December and make our determination at that point in time. I think that would be in the best interest of the town, in my opinion. Anybody else have any thoughts, or?
Well, I guess my only thought is, you know, the other night, we had talked about probationary period, but again, I tend to agree with you, but what is he being measured against as far as probationary period is concerned? In my experience, in the private sector, when you're on probationary period, there's usually some sort of goals, objectives, behavior that whoever your superior manager, the company, is expecting you to follow. And as I've had discussions with John, when I look at our performance management process, I don't really see that. I see the performance evaluation form that John provided was more, I'd call them skills, traits, behaviors, as opposed to specific goals and expectations that the board had within this probationary period. And for me, I think that if, you know, we wait, is that in fairness to John, if we come back in December and we conclude that either we appoint, but if we don't appoint, you know, that's 100-day, 120-day window for him to seek employment elsewhere.
Which is what his contract provides. I mean, that was, again, we would not be here tonight if it weren't for that letter that he had sent out. So, he would have only had the 120 days to begin with. I mean, we, we put that in the contract initially to protect the town somewhat. So, I think Mr., the prior town manager, I think, had a one-year period where we had to have notice one year prior to, which I thought was just crazy. So, we made it purposely 120 days to give the town some protection, and that's why we did it that way. Ken?
I tend to agree with Chairman Bervine. However, I have concerns. Back on April, we talked about the letter that Mr. DiAgostino sent to the chairman asking for permission to seek employment elsewhere, but that's not true. He actually didn't ask. He said, "I am seeking employment outside of the town of Abington." That's the statement. There was no asking for that. So, I mean, I agree with you. However, I would also like to coincide that with, if Mr. DiAgostino wants to go somewhere else, then give him the right to do that also, you know? That way, in December, if he hasn't found another job, if he still wants to stick with Abington, then we can make that decision.
Mike? You listened to everybody, but, Tom, and I know, I agree that if we move forward at all, that we should have some kind of a better system of managing what we think is, is a board that's wrong, so maybe that's something we could put in place. But I just want to straighten something out in my mind. We, it appears that we found out about Mr. DiAgostino's appoint of soliciting a job in Florida via the press. And in fact, on Wednesday, the 4th of April, Wednesday, the 18th of April, we received an email as a board. And in that email, it stated that, "I have been dissatisfied with my current situation here at town, town for some time. In an effort to determine my value and competitiveness in the market, I applied for a city managed position in Key West. Last night, the commissioners, I am very hopeful the board will again be working with me in developing a new contract. My desire to remain here in Abington and to continue progress we have made over these two-year periods, as I look over the past two years, we worked to keep the FOIA school, and on and on." So, that was on Wednesday. The following Monday, the 25th, we sat in these seats, knowing about this letter. We, as a board, did not say one word to the town manager about, "Hey, you should have had, you know, your contract says..." I knew about it. I knew his contract. But in reading this letter, it basically said, "I did apply. I'm trying to find out what my value is, but I basically want to remain here in Abington." The following day, somebody gave a copy of the contract and the letter to the, to the press. And then, I will say, I have not been happy with what has happened. But in due respect to our attorney, if I were to sit on a jury and say, "Well, he violated his contract," did he really? He did tell this board what he was doing, and basically, we did nothing. We knew it was in his contract. We didn't do anything or say anything until after the fact. So, I don't want to put the town in a, in a bad situation, and that is just my opinion. Okay? But I think that a little bit, there's been a lot said, but really, not too much has been said about this pay, this thing, and I'd be happy to give the press or anybody a copy of it for them to read. So, maybe some of it is my fault, is what I'm telling you. Maybe Mike Franny, as a member of the Board of Selectment, should have said something. I'm just of the opinion that I never would hold anybody back, and I really didn't think that our town manager was seeking employment. I had had a number of conversations with him about compensation, that, you know, he got two glowing evaluations from this board, and it does state in his contract, there were some issues with that. And I'm not going to go into it now, but privately, but I am not ready, myself personally, and I respect whatever happens tonight, my colleagues, but I would like to see us wait. But I would also go around with Mr. Deion and see if we can't express the problems we have with Mr. DiAgostino and see if we can't in some way get them under control. Maybe that's not possible. And, but I'm just, myself personally, I'm not in a position to move forward with that tonight. Thank you.
Tom had something. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just would react with this statement. I thought the whole seeking employment elsewhere was, to me, a bit of a red herring, you know, frankly. Knowing his contract, that's what it said, but everything I've ever read in the Wall Street Journal, it really kind of piqued somebody's ability to make a living elsewhere. I think I know why the board did it two and a half years ago, and John coming here is we're making an investment in him, and I think there was a concern that we didn't want him after a year to bolt and go somewhere else. But to me, my comments would be more performance-related, even though I've been only on the board for two months, and even though you've got a long laundry list of performance comments that you feel are on the left side of the ledger, I think I have a more balanced view. And to me, the reappointment would be based more on performance and other issues, such as, you know, in the paper, and I think John's feeling, again, my personal, is I'm wondering if we could afford his salary requirements going down the line. And I think there's a concern, and again, from a, from a strength viewpoint, I've seen John in action with the Finance Committee and others, and I think he's got a strong desire to grow and achieve, and certainly, he's a self-starter. But I think in lieu of that, or to put goals and objectives, then he's looking for more money to do that. And I don't know if Abington's going to be able to afford that. And the other concern I have is just, you know, acting out in the newspapers, I think, is more of a deep-rooted systemic thing, that, you know, I don't believe, and living in this town for 45 years, that everybody in town has got ethics problems, you know, are on the take, or, you know, some of the comments that he meant. And my, my concern is whether that behavior is at a deep-seated value that he has with Abington. So, for me, those are other concerns that I have, and I think I have a more balanced view of his performance, because I, I do think he stated some of his accomplishments very well, but I think there's others that he's, he's sort of fielded town in, and I think that should be, as we have in front of us today, his letter and his performance evaluation form, to consider that. But again, I respect your opinion, Mike's, and everybody's...
Well, again, everybody has to make their own determination based on their own criteria, so.
Can I just say?
Head, Mike.
I don't know how you find out what the salary requirements are until you sit down and find out through negotiations what they are, and that's probably where I would come from. I sat on the first search committee for town manager. We didn't have a lot of money, and we hired a town manager. He was, to be honest with you, a disappointment to me. Worked four and a half days, couldn't usually find him, and then we did hire a town manager. We literally had candidates come before the second search committee and say, "This town is messed up." And you're right, it was messed up. We really didn't have any leadership for a number of years. And we did get Mr. DiAgostino, who I think has a long list of accomplishments. However, in the recent past, I do share some concerns, and I don't know if we could address them or not, but I don't know if it isn't worthwhile for the board to take a look. I want to do what's right for the town, and in my conscience, that's what I have to say. I do think that we should, you know, and I know there's a lot of people that are probably ready to, they had a gun right now to shoot me, but I have to do what I think is right for the town, and I think we should at least investigate, you know... for the town, and I think we should at least investigate, you know, what we're looking at, whether we could tighten up that contract, whether we could put some stipulations in it to address our problems. And, I mean, that's where I'm standing with it. I think there's a lot going forward that we have. We have Griffin's theory, we have, you know, the capping of the dump, we have a lot of things that are, and I know how difficult it is to hit the road running, and we just have a lot of issues in this town that we're well underway but doing. But I could be wrong, and Tom, maybe you're right. Maybe he's going to be right out of the ballpark and say, "No, I'm not interested. I don't know until we investigate it."
Hold on, I think Kenny had something.
Two things. One is, we have a new, strong personnel board that was approved at Tom meeting, and I thought one of their duties was to come up with salary and salary ranges for different positions, and that could be their first duty, to see if, what the salary range should be for a town manager or a town this size. So I think that would be a good first duty for them. The other comment I have to make, and I guess it's a question, is, I thought we were eliminating contracts. I mean, does the charter say that?
He has to have a three-year agreement. Well, three, he's got to be employed for three years. That's what the charter says.
That's where I have confusion, because I thought as a board, and John urges us to do this, and I think we're doing a great job, is eliminating the contracts and trying to get everybody in line, and now we're talking about making a new contract or extending a contract. So I just have a question about that and how that would work.
Do you want me to address any of the contract stuff?
I don't think so. We're not really talking about the contract at this point in time, so.
I wasn't going to talk about my contract. I was going to talk about contracts in general.
No.
I just want to respond, and I know how Mr. Franny feels, but again, I'm trying to be objective here, and in the April twenty-fifth letter, it says, "In each year of my contract," this is written by John, "and upon a job performance review, the town manager's salary is to be set. I have never worked in an environment in which the goals that I have achieved, the hard work, dedication, and passion I have shown to this position have essentially gone unnoticed in the form of compensation." So my comment wasn't what he makes, which is, I think, reported in the Enterprise and other things, it's whether that is sufficient for what he feels his level of commitment and work is. And again, I just look at a town that frankly, we have trouble compensating our rank and file, and again, I just have an issue looking down the road of, you know, where's money going to come from to not only compensate John appropriately, but everybody else. So that was, you know, one of my chief concerns, is looking, you know, at a salary that he would be happy with.
If the town manager's not happy with the salary we offer them, then it doesn't have to work yet.
Is that true? He just said that he can't, in his contract, he can't seek employment otherwise, other ways unless he comes to us.
In the contract, it says, "The town agrees to increase the town manager's salary in amounts as the Board of Selectmen may determine and desirable. On basis of the town manager's annual performance review performed on the anniversary date and taking into consideration the financial condition of the town." So, I mean, that, we can't afford raises for.
For the three years he's been here, there have been no increases to his salary. If at some point in the future, tonight or somewhere else, we decide to reappoint him, at that point in time, we'd enter into negotiations as to whether or not the salary increases. If he wasn't happy with that, then he wouldn't take the reappointment, and we'd be looking elsewhere. It does say, Kevin, here.
No, I know, but I guess to that point, if I could, and perhaps I think I would like a legal opinion, because I've been involved in situations where the charter and bylaws may say specifically a thing, but I've had legal opinions where it said that's instruct, instruct, and I'm not going to say the word right, it's instructive, not mandatory. So I guess from that standpoint, I would like perhaps a legal opinion to make a determination. I realize the charter does say for a three-year term, but usually, at least my experience has been, is that in certain circumstances, I'm not saying this is the case, that that is instructive to the executive body, but it's solely within the jurisdiction of the executive body to then make a determination within the parameters. Now, it clearly, I would argue, you couldn't go beyond three years, but I think, you know, again, maybe that's something. I think the issue here is, you know, listening to everybody's discussion, it's obviously, it sounds like a majority wants to postpone. I thought that, you know, in deference to the board, I don't have a particular real problem with that. I was thinking more in terms of the organization and the manager himself. If the ultimate goal is going to be to not to renew, then, you know, I think it, to be fair to everybody, is to allow him the ability to look forward. I do agree with Mr. Coy. If the motion, and I would suggest that if there's going to be a motion to postpone till some date on or before December twenty-ninth or a definitive date, that we do give him the authority to look, so we're not bound up, you know, in that facet of it. I think the only thing you've got to be mindful of is that clearly, the contract was written, you know, with the idea of a severance package. So as long as you're mindful of that, and some people would argue, "Well, that's the cost of doing business, that's the way the contracts are stipulated." With that, you know, then, you know, the technical violation of the contract is, I think, is there. I think you can argue what the merits are in terms of whether it rises to a certain level or not. I, as I expressed, you know, to John in the executive session, from my standpoint, the more overriding factor were the comments in the newspaper. It was, you know, I've sat in the position for eighteen years myself. I know that there's, you know, enough problems coming your way where you don't need to create problems, and that was my concern at that point in time. In fairness, I will say that since that point, since we had the meeting in May, you know, things have simmered down. I only hope that, you know, they continue in that regard. I do think, for the record, I want to point out that when reference is made to the two letters, I think you look at the April twenty-fifth and the June twenty-ninth letter, and it's not so much what it says, it's what it does not say. And it does not say the difference, the differences that were articulated in April twenty-fifth were so significant and differentiating that caused him to take the action that he does. I do not see that in the June twenty-ninth letter. I'm hopeful that that's an oversight, but, you know, from my standpoint, that's the resignation, the compilation that has to take place when you're looking at those two letters. So at the end of the day, while I would prefer that, you know, in fairness to both sides, to make a determination this evening, I think if there's a motion to postpone, I don't object to it, you know, from that standpoint, with the understanding that it will be followed by giving him the authority to look if he deems it fitting and proper, so that we're not in that quagmire. But the additional thing is that, you know, the, at that stage, the severance package, you know, issue would be perhaps a vote.
Kevin, I mean, to the members of the board, would we not be wise to see what Mr. DiAgostino's looking for? Would we not, to see what kind of contract are you looking for to go forward, whether it be a one-year, two-year? And I agree with you. What would the compensation be, and what stipulations would we, as a board, that we've had problems, and I certainly have had some problems, would we want to put into that contract and see if it was acceptable or amenable to both sides? I mean, that's.
Yeah, there's, listen, there's no right answer. You can make a perfect argument on both sides of this issue. I can see the merits of what you're proposing, because it then says, okay, if there is an appetite to renew, then what is the final determination? It may very well be, as has been indicated, that, you know, you may not be able to come to terms. I have no idea. I just think that in the overall scheme of things is that, you know, it would be better to, rather than leave this thing to linger, to make a determination at this stage of the game. But again, if we're going to take it piecemeal, and I would suggest that perhaps we do, if there's a question on whether we should act tonight or not, put that to a vote, and if we postpone it, then take up the question of.
I think that would be, the first question would be whether or not, obviously, you want to go forward tonight or not.
Yeah, I think that's a fair assumption.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
Oh, I'll make a motion to postpone.
You want to make it to a date certain?
Yeah, I think, um.
No, I.
Well, if you want to do the hundred and twenty days, then I would suggest a date sometime in December.
Yeah, Kevin, well, Kevin's got a, everybody, I think, has valuable points. I think the one issue with me is to find out, what is that contract actually going to look for? What, where are we? How much are we going to owe? Can we afford it? Doesn't agree with it, doesn't want to do it. We have to know. I mean, I have to know.
But can I ask you?
Sure.
Don't you have to first determine whether or not you want to reappoint him before you get to that point?
Exactly.
I mean, you don't start negotiating with somebody if you're not going to reappoint.
That's a good point. That's a tough one.
Well, listen, if the board does not feel comfortable tonight making that determination, if you would prefer to kick it out till October or so, to give you more time to think about it, and then answer the question as to whether you want to.
My purpose, again, in delaying it is to see how things, you know, John's under contract for another nine months. You know, if we can evaluate his performance over the next three or four months, see how things are going, you know. If you want to do it in November, maybe, as opposed to December?
What, if I could?
Yep.
Why don't I make a motion then, and I will acquiesce, you know, in terms of if it's, generally speaking, any time a major vote has come up, if any board member, and I've been involved in situations where four members are ready to make a decision and one wasn't, in deference to that member, we've always, you know, given them that courtesy. And to extend that courtesy, again, I will state for the record, I prefer to do it tonight, but if people feel more comfortable postponing, I will make a motion that we postpone determination on the reappointment of the town manager till, until October, till November first.
I'll second that.
It's a Tuesday night.
Want to say first meeting in November?
First meeting in November.
Yeah, first meeting in November would be good.
So that'd be the fifth.
Second that, too.
The fifth of November, that's fine.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
A second.
A second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay, and secondly, in terms of, well.
Kenny had the, you want to authorize him, the town manager, to?
Permission to seek employment outside of the town of Abington. Contingent upon, in the contract, he may resign his position upon ninety days' written notice to the town, so that if our current town manager does decide to go somewhere else, he can give us ninety days, I would like to see that in the motion or not.
Sure. Is there a second?
That's fine. I, you know, if you're going to.
The whole meeting's about sticking to the contract.
I know, I know, that's fine.
Is there a second?
No second.
Then a second.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on this? I would respectfully decline the desire to seek employment elsewhere.
But just in case, if something happens where you desire to, then.
I will not desire to.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Okay. That takes us to item number four, Town Manager Report.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to add this item, and I know that the chairman of.
Thank you.
Abington.
Thank you, Paul.
Community Access Media is here. At least he wants, oh, here he is. It had come to my attention from a resident who had indicated to me that the, it was an involuntary revocation of the CAM's filing with Secretary of State's office, and that was due in part to the fact that they did not file any paperwork for a period of, since their inception. And I wanted to raise that issue because I now understand that CAM has refiled. And I guess, what I would respectfully like to request is that the town at least receives some sort of financial report, which is required under the license agreement between the, both CAM and Verizon and Comcast, so that we have a somewhat of an understanding as to what is going on here with the group. I have some license language, and we're talking about a good sum of money over the years that CAM has received through these fees. And my only concern is that CAM filed as an organization, seven twenty-three, two thousand and nine. On six eighteen, two thousand and twelve, there was an involuntary revocation. I think that revocation has since been cured by CAM, and that we're back on the right track. But I do think that there is a requirement to report to the town through the license agreement on a yearly basis, and I don't know if, I know that I've been here for two years, and I haven't received any reports on the financials from CAM or what they're supposed to provide.
I would correct you on one you got. I think Mr. DeCalo was here sometime in December or January, gave an oral report. I'm not sure he gave us a written report, but I think Mr. DeCalo, yeah, I'm not sure if it was December or January, but he did give us an oral report, and there were a number of questions that were asked to him by the board. But I agree with you, there should be annual financial reports in writing given.
Well, and I think the only reason for that is so that we can get it out there to the people, that, you know, here's what was taken in, here's what's been used, here's what the plans are, you know, capital-wise, and I think this all started because, you know, we're sharing mics, we want other rooms earmarked for production, so that we can have a greater exposure from the general public to the workings of government. What's going on in the planning board? What's going on in the zoning board? What's going on in, you know, some of these other committees? And we were hopeful that we could get to that point, at some point, that this would happen. And I know that the process is slow, it takes some time, and I'm glad that it was cured. What was concerning to me was I had no knowledge that it was revoked, unless a resident brought it to my attention, and I'm going to myself, how can that happen?
Can I just, just to make it simple, if, I know, obviously, it's been cured, is there any problem with providing a copy of the report at all, Henry, or?
No, I think we actually are, we're scheduling a meeting.
Okay.
Going over some numbers and come back. We should be in and do a report for it.
Good. Problem solved. Thank you. Thank you.
Selectmen, old and new business with you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ken.
Could I request from CAM that the Board of Selectmen receive copies of their meetings on a disc or something? We've had trouble, I think, receiving some copies of our, do we receive copies of our meetings?
Our meetings?
Oh, you were looking for two, for meetings.
Oh, yeah, no. No, we've never received it, actually. I found out about it, I think, back, if I researched the information correctly.
Let me, we don't have to go into that. There are two copies of meetings that you need. Can you just email Henry?
Well, it's not that I need it, the courts need it.
Well, council needs it, I think.
Right, our council or.
Can you either get in touch with Henry and ask him for those directly?
Well, I think we have. I think it goes back to, my point is, it goes back to.
All right, get them to us, and I'll get them to Henry, okay?
No, I'll get them to Henry. I don't, that's not the issue.
But I'll find them in the future if we can tie it with copies, so we can keep on file.
Oh, so we have a, yeah.
So we have a running record, you know, so I don't get much mic time, and I want to make sure that.
Set up a launch.
Would that be possible, and maybe?
You want a pesto?
There is no pesto, but if we could just get copies of meetings, that would be great. If there's a cost associated with it, then, okay.
Public comment? Anybody have public comment?
Just, can I just, a question, if you could, Mr. Chairman, there was an article in the Enterprise recently about the unfunded liabilities that all the cities and towns are facing, and I think the town of Abington, it's like something like forty million dollars going forward to medical health insurance to retirees. I had spoke to the town manager, we do have in place a town meeting, a budget, not a budget, but a place to put money, so we want to start saving. And he had proposed, maybe in the fall, taking some money, so maybe we could put that on agenda, and we could start to address that problem going forward. So it doesn't have to be right away.
So, it doesn't have to be right away, but it's just something I'd like to see on there.
It's a trust account that we have set up. When I got here, we set it up so that we could begin to put that money aside. I would have no problem, you know, in the fall town meeting, you know, setting a certain amount aside, you know, mindful of the fact that, you know, hopefully, in the fall, I would also like to address one of the most longstanding issues that we have, which is over the last, you know, four years, I think, the non-union employees in town, those who are left, have not received any kind of compensation at all, and I'm hoping that we can provide some for them.
So, no public comment? Adjournment?
Move with adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
That's two seconds.
Thank you.
Oh, don't forget to sign those.
They're on the way down.
Somebody will take them. All right.